Today is a presentation on the 2020 Census presentation. So Sarah, I guess you're going to do that?
Yes.
Come on, come on forward, please. And just for the record, could you state your name and everything and your organization, just for the digital record?
Sarah Fisher, I'm from Plaquemine County. I'm here representing the U.S. Census Bureau in the 2020 Census. Thank you for having me here today. I truly appreciate it. As a representative from the U.S. Census, my goal is to reach out to every county in the state of Oregon, all 36, and to meet with elected officials to talk about the 2020 Census and what's going to happen. Okay? That's why I'm here today. The 2020 Census, there's a lot of changes that are going to be going on this time around. Traditionally, we have sent out a questionnaire. People fill out the questionnaire. It goes back to data sites. We input the information. Nothing is real time. It takes a long time. There's misinformation that comes across because we can't read the writing, and it just takes a long time to get everything done. So this year, we're making some big changes. Number one, we're going to send out an invitation to every resident in the state of Oregon, and we're going to ask them to go online and fill out the census information online. If we get more than 50%, then we've met our business plan requirements. Okay? So that's step one, is to try and get everyone to go online to fill out the census questionnaire. A lot of people don't have Internet, or they're afraid to use it. Maybe they're elderly and things just don't work out well for them, or maybe they have a language issue, for example. So the second way that you can have the census, you can report your information, is via a toll-free number. When you call the toll-free number, there are 12 languages that are being spoken on the other end. So we're hoping that a lot of people will use our telephone and toll-free number to also submit the census information. Last but not least, if someone does not want to use the Internet nor call in, we will send out a form to the individual to fill out. Okay? So now there's three steps, or three possible ways to get the census done. If we don't receive a response out of one of those three ways, we will send out an enumerator. An enumerator is just a fancy way of saying it's a census taker. Okay? We're going to start this on March 23rd of 2020. The actual census date is April 1st of 2020. But we're going to open up our phone lines, the Internet, everything else, effective March 23rd. People start to call in. As they call in and we get the information, we're able to uncheck that box. So we have almost like a funnel-type thing where the information is going to become, we're going to have less and less people that we have to contact. If we haven't contacted someone after trying to reach them five times, we will send out an enumerator. The enumerators hopefully will be from your own area. So we are hiring in Yamhill County and every county in Oregon, enumerators to go out and take the information whenever necessary. One of the big questions that comes up is the PO box information. A PO box follows an individual. We do not send information to a PO box. We only send it to physical addresses. We get this information based upon the U.S. Postal Service. Back in April of last year, we sent to all the planning departments throughout the state of Oregon what's called LUCA. It's a LUCA program. It's an address update, and that has already been accomplished. We haven't had any issues there. So we've already reached out to the counties and the cities in the state and asked them to verify the addresses. It's come back to us, so we think we have valid addresses. Let's just say someone goes out, an enumerator goes out, and they see a trailer on public land, for example. That's still somebody living in your area. So the enumerator will actually do a latitude and a longitude and take the information for census purposes, because the Constitution requires that we count everyone in the United States, all people. It says nothing more than all people. So that's where you do it. Okay? Let's talk about what the census does. Every year, we get, just the state of Oregon, over $10 billion from revenue sharing. That is divided up between all of the counties and all of local governments. Okay? Altogether, it is $675 billion that goes back to the states, of which we get the $10 billion. That averages about $2,500 a person. So one of the key reasons for the census is to get the revenue-sharing money. That money is used to build roads, hospitals, it's used for the WIT program, school lunches, a variety of things, clinics. So that's where the money is going. The other part of that is the reapportionment, the 435 seats that are made up of the House of Representatives. The lines will be drawn again. Whether Oregon gets another seat, loses a seat, no one knows. We don't know until the count comes in, and I've been told not to speculate. Okay? So the reapportionment is also important, and that information will go to the president no later than December 31st of 2020. Next, we send information to the states that redistricting can be done, and that will go to Governor Brown's office no later than March 31st of 2021. Okay? So that, overall, is what we're looking to do in the 2020 Census. What's important in the census is that we always have what are called the hard-to-count population, the homeless people, people who maybe don't speak English, people who are non-documented, as an example. There are a variety of people for a variety of reasons that will not complete the census. But that hurts us. It hurts your county and it hurts your state. So we need to figure out a way to reach the hard-to-count population, and that's one of the key messages that I have for you today. Okay? I've given Ken a bunch of information on the U.S. Census for you guys to look at. I can also send anything that he likes and wants to send out to you. I can send you electronic copies. We need to focus on the hard-to-count population in Yamhill County. The best way for us to do that is to form what are called complete count committees. I've been going around to all the counties and the states and talking about complete count committees, which we refer to as CCCs, and I've given each of you a booklet about this area. Ideally, what I would like from you guys is to come back here again at some time in the future and further discuss what we need to do in order to count everyone in Yamhill County. When I met with Hood River City in County, for example, one of the things that we talked about is their hard-to-count population is a lot of the migrant workers who happen to come through and perhaps live in that area. What we were able to focus on in our work session was that most of these individuals tend to go to the one Catholic church that is there. If we can reach that Catholic church and talk with the people there about the importance of the census, and they can pass it on to the individuals that go to that church, then we can get them included in the count. Okay? So at this point in time, does anyone have any questions about where we're going?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for being here. How is this different from the, is it the American Community Survey?
Yes. The American Community Survey is just that. It's a survey, and it's done all the time around. We're always doing surveys. We do the American Community Survey. We do business and economic surveys. Those are done for census information, but it's not the census where we use to count for revenue sharing and reapportionment. We do this only once every 10 years. So that is done by the U.S. Census, but they gather different information. As an example, that is where we actually get information on income levels, is done through the ACS.
So can you tell me what questions are actually asked on the census? Because my understanding is constitutionally, it's just counting noses. We're supposed to just count people.
Actually, that's funny that you say that. We count noses when it comes to the homeless, or what we like to refer to as people who have had alternative living styles. We don't count noses with the census. We actually give them a form, and there are, there are going to be either 10 or 11 questions on there. Okay? Question number one is, how many people live in this household? Next, you have to cite the names and the birthdate of those individuals that live in that household. And that's basically the questions, and we actually have in the packet, there is a sample of what we expect it to look like. Now, we've always gone with what is called the short form, which is 10 questions. This year, there is a fairly good chance that we're going to have to go with question number 11, which is the citizenship question. That's still in court, so we don't know what the response is going to be. We expect to know by June.
So for those who don't want to particularly give up information, other than, if you want to know how many people, if you're just counting people, there are two people, there are three people, there are five people. But I know that there is concern, and there has always been the supposition that maybe this is a little bit overreach because of the questions asked. I know in the last one, and I don't know if that was the American Community Survey, where they asked how many bathrooms you had, and a variety of what many could consider invasive questions, when really, all we want to know is, how many of us are there? So I know that there's that. So if somebody were to just say, look, I'd like to tell you that there are X number of people living here, and call it good. The rest of the questions, can you give us an idea of what they're looking for, or what they might be?
The reason, the reason why we ask for the names and the birthdate is to try to avoid duplication, so that if you're saying you have six people live in your house, and then someone else says, I have six people, but the date of birth and the name is identical, we know we have an issue. The questions about the bathroom is an ACS question. That's a survey question. Our questions are more generic in nature. They're simply, how many people live in this house? Is this a rental property or a mobile home, or is it a standing structure? We do not get into any of those other questions about the house itself. It's just 10 questions. Well, I should say 11 questions at this point in time, with the citizenship being the 11th question. So it's your name, your birthday, and give us the names of other people who also live in this house. And do you own or rent this house?
And that's it?
Yeah. And there are samples of it in the booklet that he has.
Thank you.
Sarah, if they don't, if they don't fill out that additional household information, is it not, is it not, if they do it online, is it not accepted or by paper? So if they say, okay, I have five people that live in my household, but I don't want to tell you anymore, what, does it not uncomplete the survey? Is the survey rejected by the Census Bureau?
The survey will go forward. What will happen, though, is likely an enumerator will come out and actually take the information over, you know, in person. And one question that often gets asked is, on the citizenship question, what if I don't answer question number 11? Can I still submit my form? And yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any questions? Okay, so ideally, what I would like to do is, I need to meet with all elected officials in Yamhill County, and that includes your cities. So what I'm asking today is, if there's a time where we can have a work session, I can give you the full presentation, and we can actually go over the questions and talk about them individually, and get a more of a warm and fuzzy about what the census is about. April 1st is going to be the less than one year before the census is due. I assume that you have people in this county that are homeless, for example. We'll need to talk about that. How do we find where the homeless are located? How do we find where people who may not speak English are located, so that we can document their existence here? The census does not care if someone is living in a situation that is not considered acceptable. For example, let's talk about an older person who lives in an adult-only environment, and their grandchildren live there. When we do the census, we will count the grandchildren, but we do not care, we do not pass judgment on the fact that they have children living there. That's very important to us, that we, our slogan is, we count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Okay?
So tomorrow, we have our local community action partnership will do what's called a point-in-time, and it's been fairly accurate from all accounts, as far as counting homeless people and knowing where to look and that whole thing. Do you, would you take that information and not duplicate a second look around?
Unfortunately, no, we can't. We are very familiar with point-in-time, and we do expect to reach out to them in 2020. And what they do, the point-in-time people, that information goes directly to HUD. We're going to, we're probably, or at least I'm going to try and get them to do a second count that will most likely be in March of 2020, because we have to count everyone on one night to avoid duplication.
There are concerns about, obviously, privacy and data mining and all that good stuff when you're giving this amount of information. It's not unprecedented that we've seen information not be used in what it was designed for. So for those who perhaps would just like to tell you how many people are living in their home, and then maybe get a follow-up knock on the door from a friendly, government-sponsored enumerator, what is the next step? Should people say, you know what, I'm not, I'm not comfortable giving this additional information? What happens next?
It's actually against the law not to give us the information. There's a law, the federal law, that says that they have to provide us with the information. And when we go out, ideally, what will happen, let's use your area, we're going to have enumerators who are going to come out. Hopefully, they're going to be locally hired. We're going to hire close to 900 enumerators in Oregon. If we have people in your community who are enumerators, most likely, they will feel as though people locally will be able to trust them. All enumerators are, they will become a federal employee for a short amount of time. They will take an oath of office that is a lifetime oath, that they cannot divulge any information. Most of us have already done the oath of office, where I cannot divulge any information that I find in my enumeration efforts. That's the best I can, I can do. I don't know of anyone who's ever gotten arrested for not completing the census, but what I will say is, if I knock on this door, and I'm an enumerator, and I don't get the information, there's a good chance I may go next door and ask, how many people live in that house? Do you know their last name? And then we're going to try to use what are called administrative records, which means we might go to the Social Security Administration or the IRS and see what they have available on that address. So we will use administrative records if we have to.
Thank you.
Well, we should schedule a follow-up meeting, then. I'm looking at Ken, because he's the master scheduler, with other elected officials where we can sit down with you.
And that was, that was my question, Casey. Is this basically like, we look at the mayors and the commissioners? Or can it be an appointed official of a city? Because some of the cities are small, the councils are real small, and the council never get in, I mean, they should, but really, it'd be the administrator, the city administrator that would handle that. Does it really make, does it have to be elected official?
We like to have what we call trusted officials involved.
So Ken, I guess we need to put it on somebody to, at some time, point in time, in what kind of area we're looking at, that you would like to come back out?
Whenever it's available. I mean, I just, I'm with the state of Oregon at this point. I live, I live about an hour and a half from here. It's a beautiful drive. Whenever you guys set up a time, I'll be here.
So what's the late, I mean, if we're talking about?
The sooner, the sooner the better, because we, once we form the complete count committee, we then need to have them go out and figure out, for example, do you have a free health clinic here? Do you have citizens that may be undocumented that we need to reach out to? Who do we get to reach out to them? So it's, we, we form the committee, but actually, what we're looking for is who's going to be on the subcommittees? Who's going to go after certain people? There's the schools, the library. Those are other areas that are important to us, because we're going to have the Internet available, and we're asking that you have people at the library who know how to access the census site and can assist people who come in to complete the document.
Okay, because I was just looking at the suggested CCC membership, and it says the mayor or a designated trusted official. But do you then go ahead, like the head of the public school system and the regional ones, that the census works with those people to get appointees to that CCC? Or is that the county's or whose responsibility? Or is it the city's responsibilities to appoint a lot of those people?
I think it's everybody's responsibility. Just to kind of give you an overview, we have, we're forming what's called a state CCC, which is going to reach out throughout all of the state and try to figure out how they can get to the hard-to-count community. Then each, what I've asked is that each county talk with their cities. For example, I'm meeting with the city of Beaverton, just as the city of Beaverton, because it's a large city. I'll meet with Happy Valley, just as a city. But in the smaller communities, as an example, today, I'm going down to Lynn, Lincoln, and Benton County, and I'm meeting with their council government. Because those counties are so small, it makes sense to go after the regional government instead. It's really what you guys are comfortable with doing. I'll be here whenever you want me to be here.
I think if we, next week, next week's informal, we do have a plan to discuss scheduling work sessions, and that might be the time that we could target a couple of dates on the calendar. And then that would enable me to then reach out to the various cities and check availability and what would work for everyone, and at least that would be a starting point.
And other organizations or whatever.
Right.
And we do like to include, for example, faith-based organizations. If there's a large church here, for example, or if they're in Salem, there's a leadership group that actually has 500 churches underneath it. So by meeting with the leadership group, you're meeting with the churches, because they pass the information on. We're just looking for people that we would call trusted officials, who can help us drill down to the grassroots.
Well, I'll tell you, Mayor, based on that meeting we had this morning, you know, the roster use, because there's also the heads of community organizations, you know, and I imagine that would be like AJYC, Abad, I think a lot of these people could come from, if I'm looking at the makeup of the committees, we could come from those organizations that we met with this morning. So, well, we can, I think we can figure, we can figure that out.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, that takes us on to item number A, and that's our work session. And for the work session today, we do have two specific items to discuss, a review and discussion of the annual RIAC report, and we'll start with, I guess we only have one, and so that's Adam and Gordon. So you guys want to come forward, you gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Adam Zabinski, Chair of RIAC. With me is Gordon Cook, current Vice Chair, former Chair of the Committee. We tend to do this as a tag team, so if you have any questions that one of us can't answer, there's a good chance the other one can. Basically, we take this opportunity each year, and Gordon actually started it a number of years ago, where we submit an annual report to the Commissioners on what's been going on, in terms of the mandate for when RIAC was created back in 1976. It occurs to me that we may be the one ongoing Citizens Committee involved with Yamhill County Government since it's now 42 years that this has been going on. Basically, our goal is to review the roads of the county to make sure that they're safe and to see where and what improvements need to be made. One of the main focuses each year, that tends to be which roads need to have asphalt overlays and which gravel roads were able to pave, which is done primarily as a function of how much money is available in any given fiscal year and manpower available through Public Works. Not surprisingly, our goal has evolved over the years. We've gotten more and more involved in the actual activities of the Public Works Department, been involved in reviewing their budgets, actually reviewing the construction of such things as their new facility, which is really quite nice. And we get involved in other aspects of that. Because of the complexity of the world, there is a vegetation Subcommittee of our Committee, which is very active in looking at native species and invasive species along our roadways, trying to maximize the native and minimize the invasive, and trying to come up with a plan for that. In addition to that, we're very active with soil and water board. We certainly can speak to that, but, because there are just more things involved than just putting pavement on roads. We've submitted the report in writing. If you have any questions, we're here to do it. Give Gordon an opportunity to touch on a couple of things.
Well, being a Director of Soil and Water District, it's been a pleasure to be able to build a bridge between the Public Works and soil and water. It's been a long process, but I'm really excited of the cooperation that's going on now. Justin Cooley has been hired. He came from Metro, and he's quite a weed specialist, and he hit the ground running at his inventorying and spot spraying and a lot of, lot of stuff, recording issues. In fact, one of the presentations, they mentioned that they were documenting safety issues as well as vegetation. And I thought, great, oh, somebody's out there recording things. Show us where those bad culverts are, where the hidden road signs are, and the bad intersection clearances, that sort of thing. So it's not just what species, but just what's growing there, too. So that's been real helpful. And Soil and Water has been working along with that information and approaching property owners. One thing, the Public Works can't necessarily go off the bright way and deal with landowners as much, so Soil and Water can come up with programs to facilitate some of the improvements. So it's really been working well. Soil and Water has done straw mulching for erosion control, that sort of thing, that is using Public Works' straw mulching machine. And so it's, it's been a great partnership. One of the partners that I've been a little disappointed in is the Sheriff's Department. We have had liaisons coming to the meetings over the years. It's been a long time since a representative from the Sheriff's Department has come, and they really do give us some good information. We always put them at the beginning of the meeting, so they can cut out at any time, but it's real helpful that the Sheriff's Representative is there. So I'm hoping that we can improve that in the future.
Mr. Chair? I have a question.
And thank you for, that's a very exhaustive report, and you guys do a great job, just amazing. And the question about the Sheriff's Office, I know when I was going to RIAC, there was, I guess it was Sergeant Rice was there, and he would go off, and I'm wondering if, sort of, you know, we've had issues being short-staffed over the years, and maybe this wasn't a priority, but I understand the importance of it, but probably the more important is for those deputies to be out on the road. But I, I know they did bring a lot.
It's, and it's my understanding that the patrol deputy will be there at the next one, and they have a report, too. So, yeah.
That would be terrific.
Yeah, they actually asked me about it, so we got it.
You know, I guess I have a question, your comment. Normally, if we have a citizen that doesn't feel Public Works is maintaining their road, or it needs an overlay, or it needs gravel or blading or ditching, wherever, they normally go to our public, they go to Public Works, and they have the forms that they fill out to complain. Does RIAC, as a committee, ever look at the compliance with those? Or do you have anybody from the public that normally ever comes to your meetings and says, hey, we have this issue with this road, and, you know, what is RIAC, has RIAC looked at this? What do they think, think about that?
There are really two different aspects. If there's a pothole on your road, people get in touch with Public Works, and we don't follow up, we don't usually hear about those things. If it's on a larger scale, citizens from the neighborhoods do come into our meetings quite frequently with requests, complaints, and sometimes their complaints are things that we can assist them with. Sometimes they're asking for things which are outside our legal framework, both as a committee and the county, to do, and we tell them that. But we have probably 12 to 15 different groups from the public that actually come to our meetings throughout the year with various concerns.
Have you ever had anybody approach you about, let's say, either a public access road they would like, because of traffic, they'd like upgraded to a county road, or a private road that they feel should be a county, county road because the kind of traffic it has? Do you ever get that kind of?
Not in my tenure. I don't know if Gordon's.
Not in my tenure. It's been pretty much, we're not taking anything new, if you want to improve your road, and it's a private road, you got it, you know, it's that. But we have, we have done the cooperative agreements in getting roads, where property owners will pay for the heaving itself, and we will do the prep work to prepare it, if it doesn't come up to the criterion of us doing the whole project. So there is that cooperative agreement. It's been working quite well.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I think that's a very good program. I think it's actually working very well, to tell you the truth. Everybody puts a little skin into the game, and so. Okay, that's the only questions I have.
I wanted to follow up on the cooperative road improvement program question, though, in that I wanted to clarify that we all do pay for the road overlay improvement projects by our gas tax dollars. So I just wanted to put that into the conversation, because it's, it's been it's, it's been curious to me, thinking about, like, well, how do we decide which roads, gravel roads that we get to pave? And then, and then which ones do we ask the landowners to pay for the Crip, and then it goes back into the county? And that hasn't been clear to me. So I don't want it to, like, kind of...
It's actually pretty simple.
Okay.
Surprisingly simple.
Great.
The tax money goes to the operation and monies that are available in Public Works.
Yeah, right.
Traditionally, there's a certain amount that comes and is set aside for these sorts of capital programs. Years ago, probably about five years ago, RIAC established a hierarchy of roads throughout the county, going from arterials, some of which we never have to get involved with, state roads. Then you get into arteries, arterials, which have a large volume of traffic. In recent years, we've gotten down to the point where, where there's an interest in gravel roads that connect arterials being paved. That is like the tier where we are now.
Right.
There's also the level which is just below that, which gets into the economic value of the land. If there's one piece of property, it's probably not going to hit a high enough interest at committee level to pave that versus something that has a number of commercial establishments. But on any and all of these, whether it's the money where the county actually pays for the pavement, or the Crip where it's the homeowners along the road who pay for the pavement, Public Works prepares the subgrade to the standard that Public Works requires. Then it's just a matter of how the above part gets funded. With our committee, we go through and assess based on our hierarchy which ones will become the ones that the county actually pays for paving. In any given year, any road that doesn't meet that has the option of coming up with their own funding for the pavement.
Right.
Otherwise, you know, with our only few hundred of miles of pavement remaining, it'll probably take sometime in the next 125 years to get all the roads paved. You know, if you want to move it forward, it is possible.
Yeah.
We did establish a prioritization policy that sets up a chart of traffic counts, road classification, accident history, and we established a criterion, a number for each of those things. And so it's, it kind of sorts everything out as to which one is next. It was a little embarrassing when mine came up, but it's been well-used now.
Well, I just, I think I just want to say how good of a job you guys do and RIAC does. I think from looking at the roads and the bridges to the Crip program, and the, I take it where you're at now is looking at those roads, which I would refer to in city standards, is a collector road connects to arterials now where the traffic flows onto and out to the arterials. And I think the way we do things in Public Works and the way you guys do things is just a great, great job. So.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate your work.
Okay, we have nothing else on our work session, so then we'll move along to Agenda Item B, which is Department Reports. And the first one we have is Cynthia Thompson, who's our Transit Manager. So Cynthia, come on forward, please.
And I noticed that Clerk Ben Bergen is out there, but he's not on the agenda.
Let me just slide him a second.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon, it's not morning anymore.
You want to pull a little bit closer to Cynthia?
She said, "Don't get too close," though, with your new system.
Don't get too close.
Good afternoon, Chairman Olson and Commissioners. Nice to be here. It's been a while since I've given you a transit update. I used to, oh, I didn't, I thought it was... I'm sorry, I didn't bring it, because I thought you said that it was going to be in the email, so I didn't bring it. I'm sorry. But we do have hard copies. I used to send out, like, two-page, you know, updates with all the accomplishments and that goal and that sort of thing. But it seems like it's a good timing for, with the new Commissioners, and been a while since some of you have heard any details about what's going on in the Transit Department. So she's gonna, I was supposed to bring a thumb drive, and then sent it as an email. So you do have a hard copy, I think, of this presentation here in your pocket. So maybe we'll start while she looks for that. I think the first question before I go into too much information is, do any of you have any, like, burning questions you really want to ask, or things you want me to cover regarding transit before I start? You probably might, Rick might, too.
Well, I think I'll let you go through before I do mine.
Because I don't want to miss anything. If I do, you have time at the end.
We'll let you know.
Ask questions as well.
I'll time in.
And I hate doing slide presentations, like what I've done here, because it's like a slide with 50 billion items on it. But I'm not going to take, you know, go through every little item, but I just want you to have a sense of what's kind of, what we're working on right now and kind of what's on the horizon. So I brought this up because I think this is important. We have a federal audit coming up in April. And it's actually, it's done through ODOT. They hire a consultant, and then they come in, and this is something that's required when you get federal money. And these are the 10 compliance areas that they look at. And there's many, there's a lot of subcategories, but I just want you to see what types of things that they look at. And there's a number of them are, you know, federal requirements, their laws, there's things that affect transit agencies. The manager, as Transit Manager, this is essentially the areas, the topical areas of that a manager has to manage and take care of. And so they're similar to what the 10 key areas are, but not, not exactly the same. I went back and looked at sort of a lot of things that we've been doing since 2015. I started for the county first on a contract to help with the audit, and then moved into actually doing the management position. But I went back and looked at some of the key things that we've accomplished over the last three, four years, or going into four years. So there was audit, the good news about the audit was that, as you can see on the second line, we had a bunch of plans that we had to complete. So we had a procurement plan, we had a disadvantaged business enterprise, that's what DVE stands for, Title VI Civil Rights, LEP stands for Language, let's see, Limited English Proficiency, so doing a better outreach to people who don't speak English, Americans with Disabilities Act Plan, and then a number of different agreements and contracts that we had to get in order. So a lot of the heavy lifting was done last time. But one thing just to be aware of is they will look at all those, and some of those things may come before U.S. Commissioners to re-adopt or re, yeah, re-adopt so that they're current. Transit has a lot of grant reports that we have to take care of on an annual basis. So we do quarterly reports for all of our federal money, and sometimes there's other special reports that we, that we have to do. NTD stands for National Transit Database, Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, Charter. In every one of these, I could do a 10-minute conversation, but I'm not going to bore you and have your eyes glaze over. So the big...
You'll never bore me, just saying.
The big project was the Transit Development Plan. This was not a requirement, thanks to the previous grants manager at the county. She really convinced me to apply through a TGM grant, and thank God she did, because we ended up getting it to a two-year process. And just as we ended it and adopted it, it actually is a requirement for the new State Transportation Improvement Fund, which is a apparel tax for, an employee apparel tax. So lucky for us, we have a plan in place that met all those requirements. I think kind of interesting information is between '15 and '18, operating grants only, prepared, submitted, approved, was almost $6 million. Capital grants was 2.4, almost 2.5. And then we had to have some more capital grants for buses that will be coming that we don't have agreements for, but that's another almost $2 million, 1.7 million. And then the transportation improvement is around $3 million. And all of those are talking in bienniums, so they're in two-year, two-year projects. I think, since my, I hope I have this number right, but I think I do. We've gotten 10 new buses and eight, purchased eight used buses. Some of those used buses we've now gotten rid of since we got the new ones. We had a stack of shelters that were stored at Public Works for a very long time, and we got those all put together. And we did finally get the shelter installed in Amity. That was, that was nice.
I noticed when it happened. It was like, ooh.
Yeah, it took a long time, but that got done.
That was three years.
It took a while.
Had to get that installed.
And then some of that was ours. We were ready to go, and then their whole management changed, and some of the people we were working with were gone. But, and we have to do annual bus inspections, and typically First Transit has done that. But it really is best, the vehicles are owned by the county. All the capital assets are owned by the county. So the Transit Center and all of the fleet, and then we lease it to the service provider. So it makes sense for the county to have the annual inspections, just to make sure it's sort of a, you know, third-party double-checking, making sure the vehicles are in good order. So we did, for the, this is the first time, really, I got that done on, by an outside entity, other than the new buses. I let First Transit do all the new buses. As you may recall, from the, you know, we were having some problems with First Transit for a while, and we had written a letter. And out of that came some updates to their contract when we did an extension that took it through the end of this fiscal year. And then there was an increase in driver wages of $2 an hour that was implemented. Another little thing that didn't seem like it would be a big deal, but completing a fleet inventory and getting all of our vehicle files in order actually turned into about a six-to-eight-month project. And then, not this year, we ended up having to go and update all of the asset inventory that ODOT keeps, which, so it's, it's been a good, a good thing that we had that all done and organized. The Committees, as you, some of you know, when I first arrived, the YCTA Advisory Committee wasn't meeting, and Commissioner Primzich asked me to get it reinstated. So we did, and then we met for, you know, a couple of years, and until we did this, you know, reorganization, where we now have the new Yamhill County Transit Advisory Committee, which takes the place of both the YCTA and the STFAC Committee. The good news about that, I'd just like to say, is I, I think some relationships are really starting to get built, and that's happened faster than I actually thought it would. So I'm really pleased about that. The bottom, the Coordinated Public Transit and Human Services Plan, you adopted that in December of 2016. That's a requirement that's also required by ODOT and the state, and the feds to get funding. So a lot of the things on the list are required. We did, we did update our marketing, but we're going to, and logo and new schedules, but that's going to happen again when we implement new service. The bus graphics are in process, the contract's done, they're being installed right now. New mobile radios were installed. The Demand Response Scheduling System, which is CTS, which, why I can't remember what that stands for, I don't know. But so many acronyms. I think transportation people just love acronyms. But that's, they're in training right now, so that's all going well. You will have come before, you have on your agenda today, the Real-Time Communications Project, which is basically, it tracks where the buses are, provides a lot of tools, and we can, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a bit. And then a camera surveillance system procurement process is done, it'll come to you sometime in February. We attended a lot of festivals, especially as part of the transit plan, and that was, that was good. It's been good. We've been, some shuttles, and some of the ones that we're doing as part of our regular service, so they aren't considered charter, is the Fair and the UFO Festival. We do, like, parking shuttles and just make it part of our regular service.
It's super high-profile.
Yeah.
Like, that's when I really notice.
People seem to be very pleased, too, with that.
Yeah.
We were actually in the parade last year, in the UFO Parade, I forgot about that. So that was, that was kind of fun. Everybody dressed up like aliens and had a good time. The Customer Conduct Ordinance got passed. I didn't put the date, I don't remember. And then we started our first Remarkable Rider Day to, it's the Customer Appreciation Fair Pre-Day. Just recently, I've started doing some meetings with First Transit and their regional manager and their regional operations person, as we start working on implementation of all these projects that are coming out of the transit plan. And then, of course, our budget, our budget process. I just want you to get a sense of, like, for some reason, I don't know why this always seems to happen in the transit world, but the grant timing, and it seems like everything always seems to land at the same time. So right now, it's time for the new grants for all of the next biennium, for all the sources, all of our 5311, 5310, STF. And then we also just finished the big one for the new funding. So it's just sort of been a lot of things happening at the same time. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but you can see that the timelines are all fairly tight, and I wish I could do something about that, but not really can't. I would point out a couple things. We are getting a little bit less funding in both our 5310, our 53, I said that wrong about 5310, 5311 is getting a little less, and that's a biennium number, 85,000, about 40,000. And that's due to some rule changes that took place for recipients of 5311. We do have a new person starting. It's going to be a full-time employee for the county, Transit Coordinator, and we're finishing up our negotiations right now, and hopefully that person will start February 11. And let's see if there's anything else. There is potential that our STF funding could get cut by 40%. It was taken out of the governor's budget. I'm sure there are a lot of people arguing for her to put it back in, so we don't really know. But they asked us when we do our process for that funding, and that is the funding that goes to some of our nonprofit providers in the county, to, you know, do a process where we do full funding and do one where we have a 40% cut. So we'll be looking at it both ways. That's a problem for us, Yamhill County Transit, in that we use all of that money to match our federal dollars. We have very few sources that are allowed to match federal. So pretty much, it's whatever the general fund contributes and STF. So if it actually gets cut by 40, that's about $100,000 less available to match the federal money. No, they aren't sure, you know, the new funding is supposed to be for new things. So I am going to research that a little bit more and find out if there's any way to use the new funding as a match. But right now, they seem to be saying no. Some other things that are on the horizon that are also between now and the end of the fiscal year is updating the Grand Ron Tribal Contract. We, once STF process is over, we usually do agreements, updated agreements with the subproviders. I already mentioned, the camera system will come to you, the tablets procurement will come to you. And we have some more buses that we're about ready to order. We finished the procurement process. So there'll be two minivans and four more mid-sized buses, and those procurement process for you to select the vendor and approve the purchase orders will come to you. I think, oh, I meant, I said this already, but the, some of the plans that may come to you between now and before the audit would be the, an update to our ADA plan, which we've drafted, but you need to approve it. And then, if you need to re-approve some of these other plans that we already have prepared. We have a lot, I decided to have the YCTA C Committee meet monthly, because we have so much going on, and a lot of these things are going through them before they come to you. So that's, we have, I show the meeting dates there for that. So I think the big things on the horizon, obviously, it's going to be to select a vendor to provide the service. And they, the vendor, like, First Transit, they provide all the operations dispatch, they hire all the drivers, they do anything to do with operations, they do all the maintenance, they provide the facility for the maintenance. And we're also going to ask them this time to include some pricing for some planning and what we call run-cutting, or being able to actually, you know, do the timings for the route. That's not currently in their agreement. And also, going to ask for what it would cost if they provided a person or staffing to help a bus stop. You know, not, not like pouring concrete, but there's a lot of work related to bus stops and bus shelters and things that need to happen. And really, there isn't a person assigned to that at the moment. So we're going to get a price from them versus maybe. I had had an outside vendor who had helped, but he moved away, so.
I remember seeing that in the...
Yeah. I think the big, you know, if I were going to say one thing, this next fiscal year is, it's going to be all about, you know, implementing new service from the plan and getting, doing as much as we can around that. I am a little concerned about this local match issue, because it's, if it's... I am a little concerned about this local match issue, cause it's, if it's, it's about, this year, it's 14, we're only short like, I have it wrong, my spreadsheet here, something, 14,000, I think it is, if STF is kept toll. But if STF is not kept toll, then it's about $100,000. Now, it's $19,888 is the difference, less money that we're gonna have from the federal sources, and if STF is cut, it would be about $100,000. So it does appear that the county's contributing a little more from general fund than they did in previous, so I think we're gonna be okay, but going, looking long-term, it's something that I think, as the commissioners, we're probably gonna have to discuss. So we had a finance committee when we were going through the transit plan, maybe we wanna pull that together again and talk about this issue. And then, of course, once we start doing new service and getting that implemented, we'll have to update all of our schedules and those sorts of things. And, uh, stop markings, that's, got moved up to the top of the list and I think it should, but there's some challenges to making that all happen. I'm sending out an RFP right now to get pricing for just marking the stops, that doesn't include like putting in signage, because there's, we're dealing with state highways and city streets and lots of different jurisdictions. And then finally, just some things to, that'll be kind of on our discussion list down the road is, you know, somewhere out there, maintenance facility and having facilities that work for transit long-term. And then, as you know, Yamhill County Transit is a district formed as an ORS statute, a county service district, and we operate a lot like a county department, so we kind of just need to clarify that, and we've had a few discussions about that, but I think that's something on the, in the future, we'll wanna talk about, the local match. And then sustaining a quality fleet, we've been very successful getting grants, but even when I look out, look at the plan and look at what the needs are going long-term, there's still some discussion that probably needs to happen, just to keep that fleet where you wanna, where you want it to be. And then, I think that's it, other than if we, we could move to the specifics of the things that are gonna be on your agenda for the board, for the board meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions or comments. Last week, we had the new first meeting of the, or that I've attended, the new Yamhill County Transit Area Committee, the combination of STF. And I told Ken that, and I don't know if I mentioned you since, if not, I'm sorry, but that was probably one of the best-run meetings and the information that we got and how it was put together for the committee was very good, and I think this new committee is, what I see is very energized to get things done in front of transit, so I think you should be commended, and Todd, you should be commended, for everything you guys did of putting that together, cause it was probably, and, very good. And then our, the master plan, I know we all got copies of the master plan that our consultants put together, that's a very, very well-thought-out, put-together document. I think now what we have to do is get out and tell the story, it's kinda like we talked about at a housing meeting, this morning is, you always hear about the things we don't do so well, and everybody'll say, "Well, you're not doing anything about it." But if you look at Cynthia's report here and look at, especially Stu Pager, the things we have done, I just think we need to get out there and tell a better story about the things, the things we have done, cause we've done more than I have ever thought. But my only other comment was, as far as the finance committee, I think that is gonna be in the future, something very critical for us to put together to look at how we're gonna finance, continue to finance transit. I think it's, how long's it been since we've just had even a minor rate increase, Cynthia?
You mean from the federal sources or?
No, no, from the actual ridership.
Oh, that, yeah, that too. That is recommended in the plan that we do that soon. And, oh, it's, I, I don't think it's ever been increased since the county's had it. I think you had the same rates.
But I think that's why that finance committee is how we fund it, through the county, you know, do we start more out of the general fund, or do we start putting together a long-term strategic fund for transit? And I think those, the finance committee could guide us in a lot of those.
It is the time of year when I usually send a letter to all the city, cities and ask for contributions, and so I was, I've been working and I'll, I think maybe we could talk about it next time we meet, about, a thought I had about how to approach that a little differently, based on the fact of some information that's in the transit plan, but it's, requires a little longer discussion.
Cause that's critical too, I don't think we're getting the funding from the cities as we need to get.
And I think for timing, because most, like us, we're kicking off the budget process, so the earlier the better that the jurisdiction's getting notified.
I've actually already been invited to go to Willamina's meeting in February, so I think next, maybe even next week. So, I mean, with, with some of the smaller cities, it, you know, if they can give us anything, you know, some have given $500, I mean, it, I don't real, we don't really, it's more for the bigger, larger cities that, that really, I, my thought is if at the very beginning, it started out with them kind of possibly contributing more so we could solve some of the match issues, that would be helpful.
How much, Cynthia, how much, do you know, ballpark figure after you have your head, the Confederated Tribe, how much they?
Right now, our contract is, I, I don't, this might not be exactly, but it was right around $50,000.
About $50,000. Mary?
The whole, yeah, the whole Newburgh issue has been sort of a sticking point for a number of years, and I, I hope we can make that something that's fair to everybody, because we've been carrying Newburgh, and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be one of those things where it's like a, a donation or, or it's voluntary, because we still have to bear the cost, and we're running an entire bus system for this city, so I'd like to make sure we get that one nailed down this year.
Yeah, I think their city manager, I think Joe Hannan, and I know from economic Doug Brooks and the new mayor, even the new mayor realized that, you know, Newburgh's gotta step up to the plate a little bit.
Well, and they're very engaged, but they've, and they've offered, and they're currently, you're gonna hear from Kerry in a minute about a grant application we're planning to put in for Newburgh, for a transit center, street, and they're very willing to help with like shelters, stops, sign, you know, more the capital side of things. They, they really wanna step up and do that. They don't, I haven't had as many conversations about the operating side of things, so that is the area, but they are probably the most engaged of all the cities, most interested and most vocal about being supportive. And they were very good on the committee, they served on it, the transit plan committee the entire time, and so that was, that was, so I think that, you know, I'm feeling good about it, I think that there's some real opportunity there, but they haven't landed.
So Casey, you have any, you have any comments or questions for Cynthia?
Um, the, the one thing I was really, I was really glad to see this last page, that there's, thank you for bringing up things that we need to be starting to think about, especially the sustaining a quality fleet. That was, that's the thing that I've wondered about, like, okay, what are we gonna do? So thank you, I'm glad it's on your radar and I, I will be, you know, it's on mine too.
Well, if you look in the plan, I don't remember the chapter, if you look in the capital plan, the transit development plan, you'll see where it starts to, you start, I mean, we're good for a while, but then you'll start to see, when, if you're really gonna do all these services and keep them going, you're gonna have to have more buses and you're gonna have to have, you know, and then you've gotta replace all those buses, cause the ones, you know, it's amazing how fast, how many miles, we put 680,000 miles a year on our fleet, so, you know, it's, it goes fast.
And it's the goal.
Yeah.
That's funny.
So it goes.
That's what we want.
Right, exactly. But it's, you know, it's always, it's a good thing and it's a challenge. So I don't know about the things on the board agenda, do you want?
Uh, let's go.
You wanna wait and have?
Let's see here.
It's under the non-consent agenda.
Yeah, it's under the non.
So why don't we come back to, we'll come back to those in just a minute, if you have a little bit of time, Cynthia.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia.
And thank you for all the information.
Okay, our second department report is from Kerry Martin, our Grants and Special Projects, and she's gonna talk to us a little bit about the TGM, or the Transportation and Growth Management update, so.
Hi Kerry.
Hello.
Hi.
So you asked for an update on the ODOT TGM, which is the Transportation and Growth Management Grant that we received. This is for a master plan, it was $110,000 for the trail. So we received notification that, of the award of that, probably November of last year, and the process that ODOT goes through, rather than begin with an IGA, they asked that we begin with a statement of work. So we go through, and this is really from their perspective, this is an internal process that they require, and it will inform their RFP process, for the most part. So it's a broad overview of what that process is going to look like. And so Laura and Ken and I started that in December and then finished up a final draft of that for ODOT in January, and now our program coordinator, Michael, is shopping that around within ODOT. They have, they're contract people who need to look at it, they're ride-away people, they have all sorts of things. So, once that is completed, then they will put together a request for proposals for a contractor to do the master plan. They will release that, then, once we have those applications, then Ken has identified me and the new parks manager to go through the, and review all the applications and make a recommendation for the consulting group. Then ODOT will begin negotiating with that group. And once they have come to terms with that new consulting group, then they take all the information and put it together in an, in an IGA. And that's when we will bring that forward. And their thought is basically that, you know, the grant at this point is $110,000, but there will be a number of money fluctuations, and so rather than having to go back and do a number of amendments, they put all the documents together at one time. We're looking for that to be April.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And maybe this is more appropriately asked of Todd, but does this have any bearing on, you know, we have a remand, and I'm wondering if there's new supplemental information or additional findings that would, again, be, be part of, of the information that would be added to the, the master plan? Is that something that is impacted by the remand?
His face says it all.
Madam Chair, Todd Saville? No, I don't consent. I'm gonna do with the remand, I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, because I know that part of the, part of, we might have new findings, correct?
Correct, additional findings.
Additional findings. And would that not in some way supplement information that we have that would inform a, a master plan?
Well, as you, as you might recall, the, the original ordinance that we adopted specifies that a master plan needs to be adopted before the trail is open to the public. So the original ordinance already anticipated the master plan and there's, there's nothing that we need from the master plan for the findings. We just need to address the additional conditions, the additional standards in the conditional use permit provisions of zoning ordinance.
But if we got additional information or additional findings, could that in any way impact a master plan, you know?
Sure, the master plan is gonna come after that and they will be looking at it, and I guess if you adopt additional conditions as part of the, the land use proceeding, those can be addressed through the master planning process. So it actually is, is pretty linear.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it, it would be whatever we come up with could potentially be used as an input into the, into the master plan.
That's right.
But the, the master plan, as it would exist now, would not limit adding additional?
No.
No.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the timing of this, we're gonna have our findings and our hearing on the remand, and, and then the, the development of a master plan is going to come after that, isn't that?
Yeah, it's about an eight-month process is what we're anticipating, that will start approximately mid-April, so, yeah, we'll have plenty of time to go through the, the remand hearings.
I'm amazed at how many steps, and it was really wonderful to read through, so thank you for including it. It gave me a lot of reassurance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions, Counselor.
Okay. Kerry, so you have anything more to add?
Um, so Cynthia made a reference to the STIF grant, which is in the non-consent for us, so I'm working, we are working together with the city of Newburgh, and they have a lot of ideas and they have a lot of plans that they're working through right now. Our, our plan is to create an application that gives them as much leeway as possible to continue their planning and decision-making process, and so hopefully that will be successful in, in getting them some money for, for a hub, a transit hub in Newburgh.
Yeah, Joe Hannan said this morning, he did tell me which one, but they have identified, staff has identified a street and a location that they will be forwarded into their city council for recommendation of that street and, and the facilities, so. They've, cause they had two they were working with, they've narrowed it down.
One of them fell through.
Yeah, they've narrowed it down to one, but I think, myself, the master plan for the last two years, is that's one of the things I've always said, one of the critical junctures of this whole project is the mass, is the master plans, cause we, there's so many variables. So I'm glad to see that we're finally getting a, being able to get a TGM grant to address that potential part of it, a master plan, because then that, I think that'll guide the whole rest of the process all the way through, given whatever land use processes we have to go through after that, so.
So I also gave you a summary of dates on Connect Oregon. Commissioner Olson had sent an email and asked for some clarification on some of these dates. So, you know, this is our original application date and anytime there were amendments that were done or requests for changes. It's, it's been a lengthy process, you can see, we applied in 2015 and, and it was two years later in March that, that we were actually gonna move forward. And the, the end date has not, has only changed one time, we have had two other amendments, but those were for some, some other milestones that needed to be adjusted, but.
Let me look at my list here, where's my list? It was, there it is. Yeah, the intent to proceed was actually approved by BOC was March 10th of 2017, so it's now January, so almost two years later, and we, you know, we have not a lot of time to get this done, and I think that raises some red flags to me, but that's a whole different subject, we'll be talking about it at a later time with options. But I did ask Kerry to put that together, for me, just a better, a little bit better understanding of when we first put in the original application and what is the projected revised completion date now, which was 5/19/20, so that's basically about almost five years that, that we've been kind of working on this. So, and that was, that was really important, me to understand what kind of time periods we were working on, so. So thank you very much for putting that together, Kerry.
You're welcome.
And that'll be a discussion for next week.
Yeah, that's.
Because that's something that we will be coming back, cause there is something that we need to take formal board action on for next week, so.
Do you wanna hit the Homeland Security Grant?
No, we'll get to it.
We'll get, we'll get to that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you very much, Kerry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, in front of us, we have the preliminary consent agenda. Do we have any questions or anybody wanna pull anything off the preliminary consent agenda for Thursday's meeting? No? Mary? Casey?
Nope.
I only had, I only had one quest, question, and I don't wanna pull it off, but maybe, Mary, you know this, or maybe Ken does, the application for the item number three under Contracts and Grants, Approval Amendment Number Six and to our Board Order 17207, between us and the Oregon Health Authority, for $142,857 retroactive. As I looked at that, it mentioned, as I looked at the information silas, submitted an information that this does not cover the full amount of that program, but he has budget discretionary budget authority. Do we know what that, but it's not missing what that, what the county out of the HHS budget has to pay for that. He mentioned there is more, but he didn't say how much.
Well, because our discretionary contribution to HHS is, is really, you know, minimal.
Yeah, right.
But.
But out of his, I shouldn't say our discretionary.
I mean, out of his budget.
Right.
So he has significant.
Oh, he has plenty of money.
He has, so, so in other words, that he would be, that would be made up out of his, out of his budget.
Right, and that was my question, is what was the amount that would be made up? We know we're getting $142,000.
The additional amount?
Yeah.
I don't know what the additional amount is.
Twenty, is it seventy, is it $140,000? I.
Don't know what the additional amount is. We can find out and take that off the consent if you'd like, cause I don't have that dollar figure.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that then, because I'd like to know exactly, and, and I know he has the money and he can pull it out of his, but I'd like to know what.
But how much is it? I can find that out.
Okay.
That would be great.
So, anything else? If not, let's show that we will move consent agenda number three off the consent agenda for separate approval, separate deliberation on Thursday. And other than that, the items one, two, four, five, and six will stay on the consent agenda for Thursday.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'll go with everybody. So, that'll move us to the non-consent agenda items or other topics for discussion. And the first one, it's authorization of sale of tax lots. So, who wants to take, Christian, you want to do that one?
I can address that, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Why don't know if you were going to have that with the boss?
I don't think Brian is.
Or the boss out there in the audience in that nice black and white sweater was going to take that.
Yeah. This is the sale of one of the tax foreclosed properties. This is actually the property up off of Eola Hills in Amity. We're ready to complete the sale of the property back to the prior owner, who is still the current occupant of the property. So, this is the last step of the board to authorize the actual closing and sale of that property back to the prior owner.
Okay, I, you know, I'd just like to go on record and say, I'd recommend Commissioner Sterick, because this is one of her ideas, and she even brought it up this morning in our meeting, that people, you know, they walk away and they lose everything, and this gives people an opportunity to keep their equity and buy back, you know, buy back their own property so they don't walk away empty-handed. So, and I think this is one of those, one of those situations that is good. So, Mary, you have any questions?
No, I just want to thank Christian. This was his, and he was able to, you know, I really think that the county's gone just so above and beyond in terms of giving more leeway and more time and just one more time. And, yeah, you're right, the fact that somebody can get their property back is, that's the end game I would like to see. So, Christian has done all these...
So, Christian, great, great job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that together.
And to be clear, this was not one of those properties that was ever in play for us to sell or transfer to...
No, no.
Right.
No, fortunately, this owner was able to secure the funding he needed to buy the property back, so.
Which is a win-win. It's a win-win.
Nice, thanks, Christian.
It's a win-win situation.
So, move this to the consent agenda.
Yep, and move that one to the consent agenda. Item number two, consideration of approve the Connect's LTD vendor to provide wheeltime transit communication system, authorize the county administrator council, and it'll be $95,000 and $23,000 a year for two years for maintenance. So, do we have any questions of Cynthia on that one? Or do we need Cynthia to come back up? I don't have any questions.
I don't.
Do, Casey?
No, I read your description to that.
Very good, Cynthia. So, you, we'll put that on the consent agenda for Thursday, Cynthia. Item number three, consideration to approve the Transit Manager to submit a grant application to ODOT Rail and Public Transit Division for the following 2019-21 Biennium Grants, Federal 5311 and the amount of $1,628,045, and the STIF or the State Transportation Fund in the middle is 507-097. Since this is just a, what, 5310 and not 11? Okay, let it show that that should be Federal 5310 and...
Add, there's one more grant.
Oh, we add, and fifty?
We want to change some agenda, but I don't think that changed on this, so. It's 53, add all, so there's three applications.
Okay.
5311, STF, and 53...
And 5310 is what?
Is 681,455 for the Biennium.
Okay, so we have the addition of a third grant in there for 5310 for the 682,4...
685,455.
That's the one, 685,455.
Not 685.
Five. So, does anybody have questions on any three of those for Cynthia?
I do not.
If not, since we're applying for the grant, let's move that to consent agenda.
Yes, please.
With that addition, of course.
Yeah, we'll get the agenda corrected.
Yeah. Item number four, consider to authorize the Transit Manager and Grant Special Projects Manager to submit State Transportation STIF discretionary grant for the Transit Center improvements in Newburgh. So, do we have any discussions on that? Or you want to talk maybe just a little bit about brings up to date on that one, Cynthia? Or Carrie? I guess Carrie would. If not...
Yeah, just what Carrie said earlier.
Seventy-five thousand?
In general, and we think it'll be under $100,000. We don't have the exact amount.
And just a reminder on some of these transit items, because we're going to also talk about them on Thursday morning as part of the Transit Board before we convene the Board. So, this is one of those where, you know, we could even have that discussion on Thursday.
So, we can't really put it on the consent then, because we haven't discussed it with the Transit Board yet, correct?
We could.
Well, you can.
You can.
We can, unless then we can pull it off.
You could pull it off if there's questions or...
Then we can pull it off.
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and we'll move that one to the consent agenda then. Then I...
Mr. Chair, if I could...
Yes, Mr. Legal Counselor.
Consent to the Board. We have a gentleman here who's going to speak to the Board during executive session. Asked him to be here at 2:00, and he's been very patiently waiting as we tick through the rest of the agenda. Before we get to these last final discussion items, I'm wondering with the Board's consent, if we could go ahead and hold the executive session now, and then go back into open session to have those last three items of discussion to let Tom get on with the rest of his day.
Did we have concurrence by the Board?
I wasn't sure of the process to ask you that, but thank you for bringing it up.
If the Board's okay with that, otherwise, we can continue with through the agenda.
No, I, I was watching him and watching, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Mary?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so at this time, what I will do is I will...
Just recess the regular session.
I'll recess the regular session of the Board of the Commissioners, and we'll go into executive session, and you want to read your thing, Christian?
Yeah, so we want to make sure we're out, and then you can shut down.
So, anybody in the audience that's not involved in executive session will need to leave the...
So, the Annual County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session for the purpose of conducting discussions and to consult with legal counsel regarding active litigation matters. The Board has the authority to meet in executive session for this purpose pursuant to ORS Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the discussions or deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced, and no final decisions may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Okay, it looks like we only have legal, legal staff here and other county staff and our two media, so...
County Board of Commissioners, I think that takes us to item number five.
What?
D five.
D five takes item number, D five, discussion of climate change and impacts on rural residents, so.
Well, so I, I'll be brief because it's a small, I think a small request of the board for consideration. Seeing as climate change disproportionately impacts rural residents and farmers and vulnerable populations. I wanted to offer that the Northwest Climate Hub, which is part of the U.S. Forest Service, has a research scientist on, on staff who, she's back at work and is willing to give us a presentation on the impacts of climate change to especially our rural populations, but to Yamhill County. And I, so I wanted to bring that up and I brought materials for both of you and I'll put it, I'll make sure that it gets into the agenda as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of those, I mean, my personal opinion is, is we look at scheduling work sessions down the line.
Yeah.
And once we identified all those topics, we can see if that's a topic that we want a work session on or not and how the commissioner feels about it. So, Mary?
Yeah, I would, I would say at this juncture, I don't see the county being a player when it comes to climate change. I also think we have to be very careful about what sources and what experts we use to be the definitive voice on climate change. It is not settled science. And so I, I am not in favor of us using county time to address this. I'm, I'm sure if, because to what end? You know, my question is, to what end? I mean, would, what county policy would, would really be, be at play here? I think if rural residents are concerned about climate change, there are a number of things that they can do in their own personal, on their own property to mitigate, to the degree that it is possible to mitigate when climate is, is changing. But I don't see us spending time and expending county staff and resource time to address climate change at the county level.
Yeah, I guess my, my big concern of that, that is, is, and I think, Mary, you brought it up. Commissioner, is that, who, depending on who you get to testify or who you get to present, and I would not feel comfortable having one person present that could potentially be one side of the issue without having somebody else who may be on the other side of the issue presenting. So, right now, as I say, if we want to identify, then as we look at the whole list of work sessions, talk about it some more and decide we want to do it, or we can decide now that we want to do it. But I appreciate the commissioner bringing up and giving us that information, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, allow me to provide my comments then in response.
Yes, yes, you certainly can.
Which is that we, we did not ask somebody on the other side of the census issue to present today. And I'm sure that there's another side.
And I think we can do that at the next meeting, believe me, that's on my list.
I was actually wondering, yeah.
I started furiously writing.
That sounds great. Well, maybe we should do one at a time then, because I'm happy to accommodate. But, and the reason why I bring that up is that the U.S. Forest Service's Northwest Climate Hub, those are federal employees and federal scientists with M.D.s, PhDs, and M.A.s, oh, sorry, MSs. And they are also employed by the federal government, just as the, the person from the Census Bureau was here. The, the state of Oregon maintains an Oregon Climate Research Institute as well. And I, I'm, will be providing you, and I have a copy for a reporter in the back too, but.
That's Nicole, you start about you, Nicole.
That's right, because the other reporter's in the front, yeah, yeah, exactly. But I think it, I know that it affects county residents and it's something that's bigger than every single individual household. And there are things that we can do, but there are things that we have to do at the scale of a county rather than at an individual level. And, yeah.
Yeah, I think as Cherylson has pointed out, this would be something that we can, I think, maybe put on a list to discuss. Do we want to move this forward to, to a thing? Do we want to make it something that we, we work on? Because I think at, at the end of the day, for me, I just look at this as, is this, is this a county project? Is this a county initiative? Is this something, and under what capacity, is the county going to address climate change? I think not, but that.
Well, no, and I think that's, that's why I brought that up, because I think as we look at all these things, if we're getting to get to the point where we're going to start scheduling out, you know, work sessions, I think one of the first work sessions we could have a session on is, what criteria do we use? As a commission, I mean, what considerations do we use if we want a, you know, want, want a presentation or something? You know, are there certain criteria we should use, we shouldn't use? And if we do use a certain criteria, how do we make sure everybody's involved in it, you know? And so I think, I think that's, that's probably one of the first things we do is, is actually look at what criteria we use to establish. Because I think we're going to have a lot more of these things in the future come up and it would be, instead of talking about everyone individually, it'd be nice, well, this meets our criteria, or this doesn't meet our criteria. You bring up the issues, and I agree with Commissioner Kula, but you bring up the issues. Is there really things the county can do through law or through legal, through ordinance or something to impact that? I, I, I don't, I don't know, because I, to tell you the truth, I just really don't know. And if there's not, then we probably shouldn't. If there is, then we could talk about those kind of things. But I'd rather us talk about those kinds of things and then decide, okay, we decided we could do that. Now let's look at having somebody come in and do a, do a presentation.
Agreed.
So.
Thank you.
So you okay with that, Casey, and then we'll look at it that way? Well, I guess it's a discussion.
I mean, I guess, yeah, yeah, it's a discussion.
It's a discussion.
So, thank you for weighing in.
But make sure it gets on, make sure it gets on that list of things we might want to have, have, we might want to have one on or discuss.
On work session scheduling, is that?
Yeah, just to discuss it at a, on a, on a, we're going to have a session on, on work sessions in general. This being one topic for a work session.
But keep that in your list, if we would decide we want these kinds of things and we decide what the criteria is, then we make sure it gets on the list of having one, having one of those. Okay, the next item is discussion of master.
That I was thinking too.
Ken, you've got it under control. The next one is discussion of a master plan idea for major development projects.
I think that's number six.
Oh, discussion of impacts on federal shutdown on county residents.
And it sounded, Commissioner Stare, like you had some, some things to say about it. I put it on the agenda, but.
Just, we were asked, or I was asked, what were some of the, what were some of the impacts going to be? So I had a list during the shutdown of WIC and, and food stamps and different things and benefits. But that now is sort of.
For three weeks.
For three weeks, anyway.
But for, I think we're close to two now, so.
So, in any event, we have, that's sort of, we'll put that on hold. But the other thing I was just mentioning is that Oregon lawmakers are looking at the possibility of authorizing unemployment benefits for federal workers impacted. That's not something that's going to happen in three weeks.
Right.
Or two weeks, or maybe it will if they do, you know, because session has started. So, I'm just saying in terms of the state, that's one of the options that we might have.
Yeah.
Casey?
And I wanted to bring it up because it felt like we, I knew that we have a lot of federal employees in the county and I was, I wanted to make sure that it was on our, in our world that we think about how they're affected and how we might be able to help them, so.
Well, I, I know, you know, and I appreciate, definitely appreciate, and I told him this morning, the information Silas sent out on SNAP and WIC, you know, and everything like that. And I tried to think through my own mind after I read it, is what other areas other than, because most of them, let's say, are HHS issues, let's face it. What other issues could this county have where a federal shutdown would potentially affect either us as a county or our citizens? And that was hard to get, you know, it was really hard to get my hand around because, you know, there's a lot in the county. We have a lot of private federal contractors who aren't going to get paid.
Right.
You know, the employers are going to pay, but the contractors, a lot of private contractors aren't going to get paid. But I think that just this whole exercise of knowing, you know, if, if there is another extended federal government, you know, what, or shutdown, what is really our exposure to it, especially for our citizens? We might even need to look internally and say, okay, all of a sudden, some of these grant checks we get or some pass-through money, if that isn't processed to the states and the state doesn't get it to us, you know, and that's that rainy day, kind of that rainy day. How long can we operate with a cut, you know, 50% funding, 75% funding? But that's a whole different topic. Contingencies, like, there's a whole different topic on its own. But we take the, the employees, like, say, at FCI Sheridan. What was really, I liked was to see all throughout the state, you see it throughout the federal government TSA, how a lot of the private employers and a lot of the faith-based community, a lot of the civic organizations are stepping up and making sure food is furnished, making sure they have clothes. Places like some of the credit unions say, okay, we'll give you a 30-day 0% loan that you, and we'll even give you, once you go back to work, 90 days to pay it off, because I think that's a community taking care of themselves.
Right.
And I think that's what I'd like to see more of, so. But Casey, I appreciate you bringing it up because that is, that is a big issue.
And I was wondering, actually, I am, I was starting to realize that it's, could be considered an emergency in a way. Do you have any thoughts, Brian?
I, I'm struggling to find a nexus between the government shutdown and emergency.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Obviously, if, if the commissioners thought it appropriate, could certainly entertain the emergency declaration if it's one of the 12 ways to declare.
Right, yeah.
You know, I think, you know, I mentioned last week that YCAP has been delivering food to FCI, to employees out in, in the West Valley and, and there's that. But I, I did get a, an inquiry from a constituent who said, what are you doing about this? And I, my response to this constituent was, when we look at government as the answer to every problem, it's like we get so generous with other people's money and we get really generous in what are you going to use taxpayer money for? And I'm guarded about that. And so my, my question to this constituent was, what have you done about it? There are GoFundMe accounts, there are lots and lots, as you mentioned, of community efforts. And also, I think one of the biggest things we can do is our congressional delegation needs to hear from us. What is it that we would like to see them do in terms of this particular situation? You know, it's that, that revenge politics that's going on on both sides. How do we, how do we deal with it? But I don't see the county, i.e. the county owns nothing other than what the taxpayers have provided, coming in to save the day because it just means us, we're just taking other people's money and, and get to be generous with that. And I'm a little concerned that we make that the first order of business.
Yeah, I, I have to, I have to agree with you, Commissioner. I think, I think we should, if, I, I look at the county as potentially, especially after that housing enabler. We have to, part of our job should make sure that, are, we have these, all these great organizations, these nonprofits, and we have these, that people know that there is some place that they can go to get that kind of an assistance. So, we're kind of really an enabler for our citizens. We're not doing it, but we're enabling, giving our citizens information they need so they can go out and do it, so they can go out and do it themselves. And I think that's what's critical for us as leaders, is to allow the citizens to tell them, like you did, you know, when you asked, what have you done, done yourself? But I think if we give our citizens that information about whether it be housing, whether it be shutdown or anything, here's where you can go and get help, here's who you could call on. That's, that's what I think our government's job really is, so.
It's interesting though, because we, we make land use decisions all the time. We don't ask people to make them amongst themselves. And so I think of, I think of us as kind of the people who are willing, and I know that you are, willing to stick our necks out a little bit and speak to those higher powers about the issues that are of concern here. And you do that actually all the time at the legislature. And so that's one area that, it doesn't actually.
Yeah, I can tell you, our legislators are probably tired of getting letters from me.
It doesn't actually cost us any taxpayer money in order to listen, find out, and then communicate, you know, up the chain of command.
Yeah, so that's actually controlling our situation.
Yeah, and, and making, you know, we, we could have gotten together during the shutdown and said, after a discussion, you know, we want, as a Board of Commissioners, the, the Congress to do this, or the White House to do that. But we didn't, we chose not to communicate. And so I see it as an opportunity, rather than to look for ways that we can physically help people, but provide that almost like a moral compass to it. Because it felt like people were getting lost, so.
But that moral compass would be different for each commissioner. And, and, you know, in other words, we, we could have written a letter. We do that all the time. We write letters to federal representatives, we write letters to state, all kinds of things. If that were something the board wanted to do.
Right.
But as far as what's the county going to do, that usually means using other people's money to be, to be charitable. And, and I don't think that's what government should be doing. But, you know, and really.
We could have interpreted it differently.
What could we have, what is it that, you're looking at the county, once again, is what could the county have done other than work on some of the things that our social service agencies can help do? But I wasn't really clear on what the request was.
Yeah, totally. And I'm just saying that communicating both to residents in the county and communicating to other elected officials is one thing we could have done.
And I think that communicating to the citizens, well, communicating to other elected officials, I'll go back to, you know, depending on any particular subject and where you stand on, you might be way over here on one, way over here on another. Is, it's tough for a board, especially with only three, to determine when you have different views, anything outside the privy of the county, like, we may feel differently on different issues. Well, that's where us as individuals, not as government officials, as us as individuals, we should provide that influence to our, our elected, our elected officials on the national level, the state level. But if there's something that really affects, that we three feel that, like, the housing, which really, we can have an influence on that housing, maybe that's something we should, you know, that's something we should do. But I don't, I, that, I don't want to get into those philosophical, because I'm not, I'm not so sure. I don't think, I think you have to wait for the situation to see what it is. I think every situation presents itself, every situation presents itself differently, so. But that was a good point, good point. Got it up. Can we move on to number seven now?
Let's move on to number seven.
Let's move on to number seven, discussion of master plan idea for major development projects on EFU and unincorporated county property. So, I think we could all talk about this one.
I think so, yeah.
Well, you know, I think you probably put it on, did you put it on the agenda or did I have that one put on?
He's pretending. Ken didn't like appreciate the joke as much as Mary I did. No, he is. Um, yes, yes, and I reached out to some other people too to find out.
Yeah, after our, I don't know, Christian, because, let's see, they still, the decision we made last week on the winery, we can talk about generalities about that process without talking about that particular one, because that, that still be, that could be appealed to Luba.
I think it's coming back next week for final approval, so. I mean, you, you've tentatively adopted it, you've made your decision.
Okay.
But given the, the, you know, prospect that it theoretically could get appealed and could come back, it's probably best if you don't, if you can, if you can, you know, discuss this topic without getting into specifics.
Well, that, that was my question, because I, there's a lot I have to say about this topic, but I'm not so sure by saying something, if it weren't to put me in a position where if it was reman, if we did go to Luba and it was remanded back to us.
So, one thing we could do is, we could have a conversation with Todd. And maybe if it's appropriate to bring back and discuss, you guys could bring it back at another meeting.
Okay, I'd, I'd rather do that because I think.
I could talk about it without talking about A R F, but, or, no, yeah.
Well, but I don't know if you really can, because it might affect, it might affect the decision you have to make on that item.
I, I don't know what you're planning to discuss, so it's hard for me.
About, about doing, doing master, overall doing, we don't have in the county, we don't have any quote-unquote land that we master plan, like cities have. So if you had somebody in, outside of Amity, that come and wanted to put in something now, something later, and something later, that we don't require the development of a master plan that incorporates that whole five, 10, 15-year vision, and it only incorporates that particular land use issue at that time. So having planning tools that would allow the county legally to do, to require a certain kind of development, to have master, master plans, which is pretty common in ci, I mean, it's pretty common in cities in development, but it, you don't, you don't see it in counties a lot. Am I, do I, am I confusing you now totally, Mary?
I'm not, I'm not following. I don't know, again, this seems to be one of those solutions in search of a problem.
Well, I guess I don't want to, I guess I don't want to talk about, I'd like to explain it to you more, but I think it could have an effect in the way I might be vote on this, what we have now.
Maybe it's something we could chat about after the meeting and then, because it sounds like it's something that, if, if the board wanted to have a broader discussion, it would make sense to have the planning department, maybe, here and involve. We could get their input. And Todd to get his, you know, Landry's input, but.
Sounds like a work session.
Sounds like a work on the list.
I put it on the agenda so that we could start, the, start thinking about it.
Put it on the work session agenda.
I am, and partly Catherine Jernsted brought it up, that she wanted us to have the county to have a, a better way. And this comes back to that there is a problem that some people recognize. Other people don't recognize it in planning in the county. So I'm bringing back the solution in search of a problem thing. Catherine Jernsted was here on behalf of Friends of Yamhill County stating a. Um, Catherine Jernsted was here on behalf of Friends of Yamhill County stating a problem as she saw it. Uh, and her solution that she proposed was a master plan, permitting process. And the potential benefits of master planning, so this is for projects where there's going to be multiple applications over time, and right now we can only look at one at a time. Are flexibility to allow for new and emerging ideas, that is not trying to stick a square peg in a round hole, like a new idea into the development code. Um, it, the benefit is prudent infrastructure planning, uh, overall vision for the development that's easier to articulate. So the, the developer can present more easily when there's a, a whole plan. Um, it provides for a public process for large developments that are going to have a big impact on their neighborhoods and in the surrounding communities. And it provides for a more thoughtful and intentional, uh, project that's easier to process after that master plan has been begun, so. And I know this is a big conversation, but it potentially allows us to talk about something that is near and dear to both of us, which is water. And I'm actually talking to Water Resources about how they can, um, plug into this, so. And that's, for me, that's one of the big things, is making sure that we have water.
Oh, I, I know, I agree.
And that we can take into account.
I agree with you 100%, and I lo, I like the idea myself of doing master planning on large, especially now where we in the tourism and industries of doing that. My only concern was that if we were talking about anything now that could affect a decision we may have to make later.
Right, and a good example in the, in the city, so it's in the city, so we don't need to, um, is the, I think they call them the cottages at Shugwin Farms, and that they're asking, they would like to make their lot sizes smaller so they can have more affordable homes that are on smaller lots. And they can get more on county acre. We get higher density in the city. And, um, they're going through what's called a planned amendment, uh, planned development amendment. And that's kind of like a master plan, because it's asking for something that's slightly different than what is allowed by code.
Yeah, and see, and that's in the, see, well, that's in their zoning laws, so they have to do.
But it's not required. Planned, uh, development amendments are not required, and, um-
Unless you want a conditional use or something on it.
Yeah, yeah. And so for me, what I see is this is a great opportunity for us to, rather than being, reacting, reacting simply to each individual application that comes from the same owner.
Definitely understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have some concerns, because I, I know that in this county, we have a reputation, and it's well-deserved, for being able to be the can-do. You know, we say yes, but other counties say no. If you look at the number of examples we have of, of businesses and industries and, and various, uh, enterprises that have decided to locate here because we said yes. And despite, uh, what I consider very restrictive, uh, land use laws, um, we have been able to, to say yes and to allow that to continue. So I, I, when you, when you say that, sort of that overarching master plan, to me, I like the flexibility of being to take each project on its own merit and let us make those decisions based on that.
Sure, sure, I, I totally, I understand what you're talking about. There, there's a great deal of merit to that. Um, what we are sometimes not able to do is look at a whole project. We're only able to look at just one piece of it. And, uh, when we're only able to look at one piece, we obviously don't see the big picture. Um, I anticipate that this will be a great way for communities to have less contentious land use decisions around big projects.
Well, I guess, I see the big picture. My issue is I see the big picture in my own mind, but we don't have anything in place right now that will allow us to what we may feel is a big issue.
Yeah.
To judge anything on the, and only judge it, land use on the applications in front of us today.
Right.
Right, it's a good one, so.
And I'm, um, I, I have a meeting scheduled with Water Resources to talk about where we can, um, address water without getting on their, their wrong side. Because it's really important to me rural residents, rural farms, rural wineries, um, have water into the future.
The problem is, and what I have found in working with OWRD, is that, as we know, that the state owns the water. The county really has nothing to say about water.
Yeah.
And so I think whatever we need to address, that's where we kick it up to the state. We work through AOC and the Natural Resources Department, because there's, we're, we're, our hands are tied in the county.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I, I don't, um, I don't think we fully are tied.
Well, I don't think-
Based upon my reading.
Well, this is to say, I think there's a lot more. This could be a whole discussion on its own. I, I love these type of discussions, because I think it makes you think out, makes us all think outside the box a little bit about what we can and what we can't do, can't do. Uh, because I think there's things we can do that we don't think we can do. And I think there's things we can't do that maybe we think we can do. So, but that's what, that's what this gentleman over here is for, to tell us what we can do and what we can't do.
Behind the door?
Okay, do we have, uh-
Okay, well, thank you for engaging.
Thank you.
I have a feeling that we, we will have some good solutions.
I, I look forward to the discussion.
And do we have, um, that'll take us on to, we've already had our executive session. So that takes us on to commissioner updates, announcements. Any commissioner updates or announcements?
I just want to give props and kudos to Health and Human Services, because I don't know if any of you saw the article in the Oregonian that talked about basically the cruelty of the mental health system. And one of the things they call out as a solution is to have, uh, one of the solutions is to have, uh, community-based care, which we do, and which has become the example for other programs throughout the state. So it works, it's cheaper, and it has a better outcome.
Anything else for you right now?
That's it.
How about you, Case?
Um, I learned, um, I went to COG for a new member orientation. Thank you for letting me be the, uh, the member of the board.
You say you're a, you're a key cog in the wheel, right?
That's right. It's better than being a wrench in the wheel. Um, and a couple of the things that I learned that were interesting were that, uh, COG does, excuse me, I've run out of water. What they call strategic planning light, um, where they will come to, uh, facilitate for us, uh, for no charge, um, strategic planning services. So they'll help us, uh, go through a goal setting, um, from the very begin, the highest level to, um, getting our, like, action plan.
As part of our master, as part of our membership fee.
Yes, exactly, as part of our membership fee. And, um, that was really nice to know, because I don't, unless I'm missing it somewhere, I don't actually see that we have. Um, everybody else is going through goal setting right now. Um, at AOC, everybody said, how was your goal setting sessions? Woo, I'm exhausted from them, and I was like, really, ready. Another thing that they talked about was, uh, that they can help with, um, they can provide the service for a fee to do, uh, sorry, comp, uh, comprehensive land use plan updating. Um, which, if Ken Friday was here, he'd be, uh, we talked about this, about the challenges with updating comp plans. But our comp plan, um, could, I believe, could use some updating. And so it's nice to know that there's a resource outside of the county to, because land use planning is very busy right now. Um, and then the other thing that they talked about, uh, was, um, they are working on developing, uh, or they just, uh, finished developing a beginning fund balance policy. Um, and I thought that, that might be something that we want to tackle for our-
Their model template, their model template.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's been working for a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, so they just did, uh, the, they developed a policy that they just implemented for themselves, yeah. So those were all things I found really interesting, and I never would have thought they were interesting 10 months ago.
Well, you, you just, you just wait. Once you're done with County College, you'll find a lot of things you never thought were interesting.
So that's me. Chair?
Yeah, just a couple of things I have is, uh, this morning I had the opportunity with Commissioner Stare of attending the Housing Synergy Summit put on by House Authority Yamhill County. About 30 people there, just, what, what a great group. I, I like to kind of call it the brain trust, because everybody represented, every phase out, except, you know, there were, there were people there representing HHS, and Silas, Silas came not too long after you left. And, um, there were people there representing community home builders, um, HAYC, YCAP, both habitats in the county. And, you know, there was a lot of this good thinking going together. And hopefully, we talked about, well, should, should this group meet quarterly, semiannually? I think it was a consensus, a group, that a quarterly meeting to keep things moving along would be really good. But they, we did identify, it was really interesting that, I had never thought about, that we identified two groups of strategic people that were not at the table. And those were the realtors and the finance, and the lenders were not at the table of any of these discussions.
Did you have some houseless people there? Did you have houseless folks there?
This, not, not, but there will be at the Civic Center, hold on, on the fifth. But, but I thought that was kind of interesting, yeah. Lender, lenders and the realtors weren't, I mean, they have a big interest in this.
Commissioner Stare knows this.
That, but I think this has an opportunity to really go, I, I like what New, you know, it's funny, because some of the things Newburgh is doing, I heard some people from McMinnville saying, well, gee, City of McMinnville saying, we should do that. Some of the things Remy Drabikin talked about doing is, Johanna was saying, well, gee, maybe the city of Newburgh should look at doing something like that. So I think that's where these partnerships really, really come in handy, and I think that was very, very well done. And then the only other thing I have is, the end of February, there'll be a group of about nine people, right now, representing government, private sector, the confederated tribe, that will be going back and meeting with the Secretary of Transportation and all of our congressional delegation regarding getting enough funding to hopefully finish the bypass, not do a phase to finish it. Because right now, State of Oregon with the Fazio on the transportation, ranking member of the Transportation Committee, and Wyden being on the ways and meeting transportation ways. We, you know, there's a lot of interest out there in what happens in Oregon. So we're, a bunch of people are going to go back and talk to our, see if we can get money funneled to the, directly to the bypass, not do a phase to finish the whole thing, so. And then on the bypass, you may know the governor allocated another 22 million, or 32 million dollars in her budget for the, specifically for the bypass. Probably cut out of her budget, but it's in the budget now, so. And that's all I have. So anybody have anything else? Ken, you have anything? Christian? And Brian, I, I see you're awake back there. Okay, that being said, meeting adjourned.